That swag. Isn't that cool? I like it.
It's funny to see them.
The what? Oh. Oh, I didn't, I guess I didn't do. Oh, really? Hmm. I guess I never noticed that. No, probably not.
And most of them are from the.
It is now four thirty on Wednesday, April the ninth, and this is the time for the work session on the Soldatna Fieldhouse. And I will now turn it over to City Manager.
Okay, before we get started, I have a statement and then we'll go to the team and go from there. So I just want to say that we are eager to present the Fieldhouse information to you this evening. We've lots of preparation into this and we're loving it. Our team's conversations have gone from early uncertainties of the bid process, making sure there was adequate funding to build the facility, happiness over receiving favorable bids, walking through the, Kyle smiled over there, walking through the trials of BABA and the federal grant funding, the contractor process, which has gone very well, and watching this beautiful building being built, and preparing now for the finish line. Tonight's conversation represents a lot of what-if questions and rabbit trails. We have held countless meetings and talked about every possibility for the facility's use and all the what-ifs that could happen along the way. But before we begin this conversation, on behalf of our team, I want to thank everyone involved in the project. And as all of you know, this project is decades, if not more, in the making. I get asked all the time, how did this come about? My answer has always been that this project is happening because of very enthusiastic, dedicated, persistent members of our community who tirelessly advocated for the project, the City of Soldatna staff, and the steadfast city council who have been determined to see this project to completion. So here we go, the Soldatna Fieldhouse, and we'll kick it off with Joel and then we'll go from there.
Cool, sounds good. How's everybody doing? I just want to introduce, you guys probably know everybody. Michaela Randall is the Assistant Director for the Parks and Rec Department. You might not have met her yet. She's been with us for a year and a half now, a huge asset to the city, the department, and Fieldhouse. Couldn't have, we couldn't be here where we're at right now without what she brought to the team. So just wanted to make that one introduction. We're going to move kind of quick. There's a lot of information. There's probably seven or eight sections that we're going to, we're going to touch base on. Opportunity for questions in each little area and then plenty of space at the end for more questions. If you guys want to kind of get into the weeds on any sort of specifics that you have. So we're going to start with the construction update. So I'm going to pass this over to CO. We do have a couple of photos that will show you. They're kind of small, but we'll just let CO kind of give an update on where we're at with construction.
Thanks, Joel. Construction's moving right along. I'm sure anyone that's driven by has seen the building's looking great, got the extra signage up. Product's right on schedule. Inspection on the interior stuff, worked on finishes and painting and so on inside. Well, still outdoor stuff to do, of course, landscape and some of the site work outside. That'll probably stretch into the first week or two of June, I would expect.
Including filling in the dips.
Yes, the parking lot is not complete. That's a popular question, those big scary trenches in the middle. Still get a bunch of topsoil placed in those and a bunch of trees planted in them. And they're not going to be big car-catching traps when we're done. There's still more, more work to come there.
Yeah. Next slide.
There we go, we're green. This slide just shows some of the anticipated costs. You know, as City Manager Bauer noted, we implemented a bidding strategy, had, had a lot of thought put into the bid phase. It was really at the height of cost uncertainty and, and construction cost escalation. And, you know, here, here we'd promised to deliver this building. And, you know, we, we needed to come up with some, some solutions to make sure we could do it. And as noted, we were successful. You can see the design and construction administration. The construction administration is, is our design team's assistance in the construction phase, reviewing some middles, helping us with additional specifications, inspections, looking at pay requests, things of that nature. Utilities miscellaneous, that's where things like HEA and NSTAR, things of that nature. And then the last one, owner purchased FFNE. That's a big number. That's a lot of the, that's not in the contract, the construction contract. That's the big scary list that Joel and Michaela have been working on in the spreadsheet. All of the equipment to outfit the building. You know, the intent was to have a fully functional, fully outfitted facility from the get-go for our community to use right from the start. So as you can see, our total anticipated cost at eighteen point one five. If I had a clicker, I'd click it. Funding sources, Melanie.
Um, yeah, this slide, oh, it's on, sorry. Um, this slide talks about the funding sources. The first one in the amount of ten million dollars. As you all know, the voters approved fifteen million dollars in general obligation bonds to be issued last, in October of twenty twenty-two. We issued the first tranche of those in February of twenty-three. We're far enough along in the project now that we've utilized all ten million of the bonds. The second tranche, we plan on issuing probably December or January. The bond bank generally issues twice a year and will just miss the April issuance. So the next one isn't until December or January. To fill that gap, back in September of twenty twenty-four, we issued a bond anticipation note in an amount not to exceed five million dollars. So when the project is complete and the final construction costs are known, we'll pay off that bond anticipation note with the next tranche of bonds that we're issuing. The city was fortunate enough to receive CDS funds that are being administered through USDA. We're using those for the purchase of flooring, which I believe we've recently ordered. That's in the amount of a million dollars. We also were able to utilize some remaining ARPA funds in the amount of almost one point two million or one point one million dollars. Rasmussen Funds, we were fortunate enough to receive a grant in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand from Rasmussen. That's going to be used for furniture fixtures and equipment. And then we received a donation from the friends of the Soldatna Fieldhouse. Any remaining construction costs that aren't covered here will be used, will be paid for with city investment funds. Next slide.
One quick question for you, Melanie. With what the bond mark, I mean, the, well, the, the market itself has been doing, is that going to have any long-term effect or the effect on the second bond issue?
I did speak with the bond bank last week and they're anticipating four point eight two percent interest rate. The last tranche of bonds that we issued was four point one percent. And they said that's a, four point eight two is a very conservative number, number. So it will likely come in less than that, but just to plan on four point eight two, just to be safe. So I, I think it's, it's not going to be a lot more than the first tranche of bonds was.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. Oh, okay. So Jeanette had asked me to put together what our annual debt service payments are because we're, we're issuing more and more debt. The first one is the first tranche of Fieldhouse bonds that we talked about. The annual payment on that is about five hundred and eighty thousand. Those are thirty-year bonds and they're scheduled to be paid off in twenty fifty-three. The second is an estimated amount in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. Those will also be thirty-year bonds. We have a library expansion bonds, which were originally twenty-year bonds. They were refunded at ten years and reissued at a lower interest rate. Those are scheduled to be paid off in twenty thirty with a payment of about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand a year. We have a DEC loan, that's a ten-year loan that was used for wastewater treatment plant improvements. That's scheduled to be paid off in twenty twenty-eight. We pay about two hundred and seventy-one thousand on that a year. And then we have a DEC loan that we've applied for. We've received the approval for the first part of it, but then we've recommended or applied for an amendment to that, amending it up. And the estimated amount on that is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That will be a twenty-year bond. So it's about one point five million dollars in annual debt service payments that we're looking at once these are all finalized.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, thank, thank you. So in looking at that slide, Melanie, and based on what you said, after about twenty thirty, our annual debt service would be about a million dollars? If you take out the improvements to the treatment plant and the library expansion?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on the construction money side of things before we dive into the operations?
So we, you talked about anticipated cost and funding source. A while ago, it was said that we were on budget and on schedule. Can we still say we're on budget and on schedule?
Yes, we, we definitely can say that we're on schedule and on budget. And I think, and CO made a note earlier today that's kind of neat. I think the year prior to starting, we cleared trees and that's it. And when did they mobilize?
Yeah, I was just talking to the superintendent on site and he was looking at his little daily log. And it was March twentieth, a year ago, was his first day onsite, when we started the actual digging, which is, which is pretty amazing that we're just really, really twelve months into the actual construction. And now we have this amazing building.
I, I think for a, a project of this size and for a community of our size to be able to say that we are on time and on budget is, you guys, you guys are be, to be applauded. And there are a lot of projects of this magnitude that, that it can be said. So pat yourselves on the back because I will.
I kind of look at it a little bit differently. I'm thinking we're ahead of schedule because I think our original estimate was it was going to be about a two-year project. And we're looking at about a year and a half now.
Yes, that's true. That was part of that initial bidding strategy. Giving the contractor a longer timeframe is generally, you can get a better price. It just gives them more flexibility. And, and the construction bids came in pretty low and we kind of renegotiated with them. And, and they were, the initial plan, they were going to shut down and not do any construction over the winter. And we talked through with them and, and decided to, to speed that construction process up. And part of that was, we took on some of the, we split the heating costs for the building in the winter and sped the project up. So yes, it is a quicker project delivery than we first started with.
Continue.
All right, so let's move into the, the operation. So we're going to start with potential community user groups. You've seen some of this and a few different updates over the years. We really, you know, multi-use facility, so we're going to have a turf season and a court season. Court season is hardwood floor, like you would see, you know, during the March Madness that we're in the middle of or just ended. It's a, it's a pretty robust basketball court that we'll be able to do pickleball, basketball, volleyball, and footsall in. Futsal is basically indoor soccer, just, yeah, it's basically indoor soccer. It's a different game. But in the turf season, we expect, you know, flag football, baseball softball, some of these more traditional sports that are played on grass to be used in the facility. Couple of things that we've been really focused on in planning, how we're going to operate this facility is that it's going to be, we're envisioning it being a very training facility, not a spectator facility. So we don't have a million bleachers in there. We're not going to be playing a final championship game of basketball or something in there. If, if that's the case, we're probably going to be moving over to Sohigh where it's designed for a, a big game. This is going to be more, we come in here, we practice, we play tournament games. Think about like a Boys and Girls Club style where it's just parents sitting there watching. We will have some bleachers, but not a million. And so in, in how we think it's going to be used with the different user groups, that's been part of the planning process. There is going to be a slight priority lean towards our turf sports, especially in the winter season. We've never had a turf facility in this area. This will be the first one on the Kenepp Peninsula. And so we want to give our turf community or these organizations that want to use that type of flooring a slight priority, just because we've never had it. And, and they might not be well-established. And like, for example, like up in the valley, the soccer programs, they've been running an indoor program in those facilities for twenty, thirty, forty years. And so their, their soccer community is very strong. They're, they're used to fundraising and paying for that space and utilizing the turf up in the valley. We don't really have that and we really want to make sure that we're giving an opportunity for those programs to get established and, and have an opportunity to grow in our area. Whereas maybe the court sports like basketball, volleyball, they have a lot of opportunities right now and have had a lot of opportunities for the past forty, fifty years. And so they might be a little bit more established in having more of the comp programs or the little kid programs. So there's a little bit of, our, our first attempt at, at organizing this is going to be kind of leaning a little bit into the turf. Obviously, it's called a fieldhouse. We want to make sure that there's, there's that opportunity, but also knowing that once summer rolls around, things are going to change. The demand is going to change and we'll, we'll probably be playing a lot of pickleball. So Michaela's going to talk a little bit more about our programming and, and kind of what we're hoping there.
Yeah, so most of these are dreams, they're not promises. But these are things in this yellow box that we've heard from the community or we've seen in other communities. The possibilities are infinite and endless. So if you have any ideas, let us know. But some of our dreams include being able to host after prom and after graduation for some of the schools, hosting some teen movie nights and really trying to capture our teenage population and just give them a place to hang out and kind of be that cool place for them, cool, safe place for them outside of school and home. Hosting some community dances, I think we've all been to communities or Joel and I have lived in different communities that have done these. There are adults and children and mom and me and dad and me and grandma and me dances. So I think bringing some of those here would be really fun. There's a huge homeschool population in Soldatna and the surrounding areas. So being able to host homeschool gym classes is definitely high on the priority list. That's something that could mimic public school gym classes where you could still come in, you could interact with people your age and peers your age. And the, the program would be hosted by our Parks and Rec staff, teaching these kids basketball skills or soccer skills and doing a kickball unit just to kind of give them that experience of being in school and meeting people their age and also getting some exercise. And then the taught time and kinder gym, we have a really young population. And I think there are a lot of kiddos out there that post COVID don't really know how to play together. So we'd like to help teach them. I did want to kind of piggyback off the flag football conversation as well. Flag football is a huge sport, up and coming, kind of all over the nation. Alaska was actually the second state in the United States to become a sanctioned high school flag football state. Schools in Anchorage, schools in the valley and schools in Fairbanks have high school flag football. We don't have any on the peninsula and we think the Fieldhouse could kind of be a catalyst for that, to bring that down to the peninsula. There are some studies that were conducted by the Women in Sports Foundation, Nike and the National Rec and Parks Association that talk specifically about the benefits of sports for young girls. And we've found, we, they have found that the, kind of the lost demographic is youth, female youth ages seven to thirteen. So that's kind of that, that population that we hope to capture and get involved in sports. I won't go into the benefits of youth sports. I hope that those are obvious, but they're huge and they're vast and we want to make them available in our community.
In your planning processes, has there been any consideration about what might be happening in the school district with some of the schools possibly closing and some of the sports activities either being curtailed or the facilities not being available for them?
Yes, we have been watching that and kind of, we have a pretty elaborate calendar of every sport season, whether it's little kids on up to high school and adult. And kind of looking to see if, if a certain activity or sport was no longer an option for the, at the high school level, could, could that be moved into Parks and Rec and run as a, as a recreation program? And kind of looking at seeing what that could look like, so that, we are watching that. Let's go to the next slide. This is a calendar. This is another conversation that we've talked in circles because we want this facility to be multi-use. That means we're not going to be able to serve every user group and every sport all the time, all year round. Having, having the idea that some seasons are going to be turf, some will be court, there will be some events thrown in there. Where this is going to be our first attempt of what we think the community is, needs and wants. And so you can see January to April, we'll have all the turf down. So that means no pickleball, no basketball, no volleyball. This will be, this will be the flag football season, this will be the soccer season, baseball softball, these types of activities. In April, which is typically our big event season, home show, sports show, we'll probably go down to concrete and we'll turn it into a big event space for a couple of weeks. That's that red area. And then in the summer, we anticipate pickleball being big right now in the, in the ice rink. When anytime we melt the ice, it's full of nine pickleball courts every day if we had it available. People travel nowadays with fishing poles and pickleball paddles together. And so there is a lot of people that are desperate to come up and play. In the fall season, we can, the way we designed the flooring, we could put down two courts of wood and one court of turf and kind of have a hybrid system. This might, this might take care of some basketball or some footsall, but still having a little turf for like maybe, you know, little kids running around doing, doing recess stuff. This is a work in progress. This is, this is what we're going to, this is what we're proposing for at least the first couple of years to, to see. We want to, you know, give it a shot. This is what we think will fit with also other sports up in Anchorage. Typically, the Dome in Anchorage does their flag football season, January to March. This is also the prep for our high school sports. They'll be able to get out onto the turf and get, get ready for their spring sports, which we've never had an opportunity for. The, the high school soccer, baseball, softball programs. And then in the, in the summer or in the fall, that's typically youth basketball season. So there might be more interest in the, in the courts during that time.
Yeah. I'll add a quick construction-related note. Each, each rectangle of the, of the basketball, pickleball, volleyball, volleyball court is a hundred and fifty-five pounds. So it's, it's not a quick in and out kind of change swap out. It's certainly modular and gives us the multipurpose opportunities, but it's a, it's a bit of an ordeal to, to make big changes.
How long does it take to make one of those changes?
To be determined.
Yeah, the manufacturer, I mean, there, there's over eight hundred of those panels. And the manufacturer, I think, has estimated, it's like a, a ten-person crew for a ten-hour day, I think, to, to turn over the whole floor, I think, is what their estimate is. We'll, we'll see when it, when we actually get here.
Manufacturer's rep will be onsite for five days, I think?
Yeah, there, there's a bunch of training and stuff that to help us get it set up first time and how to, you know, stack them up and whatnot.
And just looking at that August star area, is that like the four H time?
No, the August one is the Kene River Classic.
And the soup supper.
And the soup supper, sorry.
Is, are there thoughts about the four H being in there at, at any time?
The four H will, they'll stay in the rink side and or find, find a new location or build a new location at some point in time. We don't, we're, we're not, we don't really want pigs and cows in there right now.
Moving right along.
I just, I wanted to, if Joel could comment on how many hours it takes right now to take the, port the flooring down in the ice arena and flooring back up in the ice arena and the work that it's been so far.
Yeah, it'll be a pretty similar changeover for the insulated flooring that we put on, on the ice. And so, you know, we, we've gotten it down to about six, six staff and we can do it in about a day and a half to flip the, the ice arena, just as a comparison of what it would take for the, the Fieldhouse side. The stars that kind of land in, in areas that might have court, we are going to purchase a, it's, it doesn't sound very cool, but there is a tarp material that you can put down on a hardwood floor that's quicker and faster that you could, you could do, you know, the Boys and Girls Club auction on the hardwood floor without having to move it or take anything up. It would just be the tarp down, you do your tables and chairs, your pipe and drape. And then the next morning, you, you roll it back up, which is a pretty standard for, if you have a gym space. And so we wouldn't have to move the flooring around, you know, hopefully just a couple of times a year is, is when we're moving things around. All right, moving on to fees and membership. This is another one that we've, we have spent most of our time and energy on. We're, we're definitely, I mean, this is, this is in your packet too, so I won't go into too much detail. But we, we definitely wanted to try to find a balance between affordable access and some cost recovery. And so we have done a quite of elaborate study of all the other recreation facilities in the state, plus some down in the states that we're familiar with that are very, very similar to what we're trying to do. Kind of looked at where everybody's at with their fees. The five dollar access into one of these facilities is pretty normal. You can see that there's a discounted rate down in the bottom right-hand corner. We're applying the discounted rate to all youth four to eighteen, seniors sixty-five and up, and then all active military and veterans. And so that, it's a little bit smaller, but and you can see the blue prices on each of these areas where it'd be three dollars to get in for, for one of these discounted groups. The punch card goes down a little bit more, ends up being, you know, basically four fifty and, and two fifty to get in. This is great, the punch card would last all year long. This is great, the punch card would last all year long. So maybe you want to just try it out a couple of times, but you're not sure. Once you get into the monthly and the three-month passes, your drop-in rate could, could get down to, you know, 50 cents or a dollar, depending on how many days. We kept it very affordable for a few different reasons. One, initially, we're not going to have a ton of activities for this drop-in membership rate. We're really looking at the walking track and drop-in sports. Other facilities might have a pool, they might have a weight room, they might have, you know, classrooms for, for fitness classes, maybe a rock climbing wall. So initially, we, there's not a lot in this sort of walk-in and play. And so that's, that's why these prices are, are pretty low. Because we want to make sure people can access it. There will be extra costs for some other programming. So if we do a yoga class or maybe a specific class that we're teaching, that would be an additional fee that somebody would pay. Just like if you went to the gym and you wanted to do a very specific thing, oftentimes there's an additional fee for that, that would pay for the instructor's time and energy. Also, if, if you're renting a court or turf, those would be different. The batting cage, we will have a year-round batting cage in there that's accessible to anybody. That's going to have a different rate too, so. Couple of things that we talked about that aren't up here is we did talk about an annual pass. At this time, we're not 100% sure on how much space and exactly what we're going to be able to offer year-round. So we, we've kind of tabled the annual pass at this point in time until we kind of, until we know how it's going to operate. Also, if you're just really passionate about pickleball and you show up in January and February and you have an annual pass for playing pickleball, but you can't because we have turf, then that doesn't feel right for us. And so we've stopped at the three-month pass, which we think is, is kind of a good point where you could, you could buy a three-month pass for the summer, for the winter, or whatever your sports season is, and really take advantage of, of what flooring is down.
We do plan on, as Joel's already stated, but continually reevaluating. So our plan right now with the year pass is look at it within the year, but for sure in a year after opening to see if it is something that would be of benefit to the users. Because like Joel said, we're not sure. We don't, we don't want someone buying a year pass and actually not get a benefit of the use. So a year from now, well, no, a year after opening, might have an amended fee scheduled for you, maybe.
I don't know if I'm jumping ahead or asking questions that don't have answers yet or, but what does the entering into the facility look like? Are you guys going to go over that? Like, is there a gate, is there a secondary entrance? And then also with this, is it one of those situations in which someone has to sign like a liability agreement? Or that kind of stuff? So just what does the customer look like when they come in to use the facility, walking in?
Yeah, I can speak on that a little bit. We've got a breezeway Arctic entry physically there that directs crowds straight to the entry point, the check-in office. So we hope to have part-time recreation staff there as well as a full-time coordinator checking people in. We've got a nice online calendar program that we hope to use that will have built-in waivers. It's where our memberships will be tracked through and maybe someday our point-of-sale as well. It's kind of a tiered program, we don't have to get into that now. But I've got a couple of scenarios that we think will happen. I look at this from a sales perspective. I'm a young mom myself with two young kids and a partner. So what does that look like for me to enter the facility with my kiddos just on a regular day? So looking at these rates, if I wanted to walk, you know, three times a week and I entered and I came up to the front desk, I might be sold a punch card just at first to see if I like it. And if I enjoy it, I want to continue coming back. I may jump right into the three-month pass or potentially just that monthly pass. And as Joel mentioned, the rate goes down with the different membership options. So if you do end up buying the monthly unlimited pass, your visit ends up being $3.30 per time, which I think is pretty fair entering. Does that kind of answer the question?
In, in practicality, say I bring my kid in to play Taotai. I'm going to pay for me and my child, like each time. And then also like when you're walking in, what's the, their gate? We also talked about it not being for spectators, but like, how do we differ? Is it access to, like, there's a gate and you walk through it and you have to pay to get into the gate? Or is it like, I just wondered how the functionality of that was going to work on a daily basis or, yeah?
Yeah, for the most part, it'll be paid to enter. And then once you're in, you've got access to the whole thing, whether you want to walk and then basketball starts and that looks fun. So you go down and play basketball for a while and you wrap up walking. So we don't want to have to pay for different activities or really monitor and police that. There is a, it's a roll-up style window and you really can't get onto the courts without passing by it. So there is a human contact point that you do have to stop at. And then as far as spectators go, we've seen it done differently at different facilities. If your kid is in sports and they're playing sports practice on the court, you're obviously going to be in the facility. We wouldn't charge you to enter the facility if your child's participating in a court sport. I think we've kind of gone back and forth on this a little bit, but I think just to start, we'll likely let parents walk while their kids participate in, in sports. There's not a lot of spectator space. It's not going to be very comfortable to sit in one place and ask all the parents and watch. So I mean, we would kind of want to encourage them to get up and get out of the way a little bit and do some laps, get some exercise in hopes that it would showcase the facility and specifically the walking track and hopefully encourage them to purchase memberships in the future.
Would that include spectators that come to watch the basketball league play?
Yes, at this point in time. If, especially if it's a tournament and somebody has the whole facility rented or if all three courts are, for example, Boys and Girls Club basketball, if you're going to watch those activities, at this point in time, you would have permission to go upstairs and walk. If that becomes a problem, then we would kind of maybe change, look at our policies at that point in time. We're not sure it's going to be a problem. And so we're not ready to make a million rules that we're not sure we need yet.
But it's possible, excuse me?
I can almost envision spectators like during a basketball game or something, getting up there on the running track and, and, you know, being able to look down on the court.
Yeah, there will be times, you're right. If, if it's, depending on what's going on, we might, there's three lanes of track. So it could be possible that during that particular window of time, probably the 5:00 to 7:00 PM time, we could close down one or two lanes of track. So spectators could stand up there and watch. And then there would, there'd be one lane for jogging. If it was, if we knew that there was going to be a lot of spectators, we might just close the entire track and, and have, you know, those hours not be used for walking because we know that there's going to be a lot of people up there.
Vice President?
Thank you. For people that have a punch card, will you have a scanner? So that I don't have to go through the process, I can just scan my card and go on in? Because I've already signed all the paperwork?
Yeah, the software that we're looking at, if it's not a scanning setup, it might just be, you talk to the, to the staff that's at the window and you're like, hi, I'm here to walk, and they can just type your name into the computer and, and you're in. Some, some other facilities, kind of like our elementary schools, there might be a computer that faces the customer and you type your own name in and then it makes like a weird ding if you haven't paid your fee yet. So we've seen that Wrangle does something similar like that. All right, let's move on to court and turf rentals. This is the other area of, of fees. We did a pretty, another elaborate study with the Alaska Recreation and Parks Association where we looked at, again, all the facilities around the state to figure out what, what people are charging. So that way we can fit somewhere in the middle is, was our goal or slightly cheaper. So you can see the turf rentals, we're looking at 100 for the full field, 60 for a half-field, batting cages, the court rental, slight discount if you rented all three courts instead of just one. And then, and then we have the event rental rates. We, for example, the turf rental, like if you were in, if you were up in the valley, a typical full-field turf is $1.25. These are communities that are a little bit bigger than us, have more established programs. So we're not drastically lower than some of these other facilities. But we are a little lower so that way we can grow these programs and give them a fighting chance. There's only a couple of programs in our community that are used to fundraising. Our hockey community is very used to fundraising to pay for ice. Our soccer, our baseball, even probably our basketball community, that's not built into their programming right now to, to raise, raise funds for, for access. We did talk with the comp soccer program. They've been buying school district gym space for the past year and getting the parents and kids used to paying to access those facilities. And so they've planted that seed already and are starting to build that sort of mentality of like, yes, we're, we need to fundraise a little bit to get in. And that, that's going to be a normal thing with this facility. And then the basketball court, 50 bucks is pretty normal around here. You know, you get into the schools, you go over to Keene, North Penn, they're all about 50 bucks for a court. So we feel like that's a, that's a fair price for right now.
Those prices include the tax?
Plus tax.
Plus tax?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Maybe a couple examples?
Yeah, I think one question that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board really wanted to know at this point was, how do I get access? How do I go in and rent a court to play dodgeball with my family? And that is something that we want to prioritize and make sure that this is always accessible to anybody who still wants to go and play. It's not just for youth sports, it's not just for adult sports. And we'll go into that more in the booking policy. But we, we kind of want to model this after what we do at the ice arena where we kind of prioritize our programs and then we, we let in the practices and, and the games. But there's always an availability for renting private ice, renting private courts. We see that kind of opening up on a platform, maybe monthly, and giving the community an opportunity to select it on the computer, you know, 6 o'clock this Tuesday, I want to buy this court. We go in and approve it and then they can just show up with their family and friends and play.
Have you established any operational hours as yet?
We're looking at probably a 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's typical for something like what we're offering. If there's a huge user group that wants to walk, you know, every day at 6:00 AM, like we would adjust. Our ice arena is essentially 6:00 AM to midnight. Right now, it has been 4:00 AM to 3:00 PM or whatever, like 22 hours or whatever that is, back in the day when we had three high schools. So if there's a demand and people want to, to use the facility, then we will be open. And, and our, the way the booking policy, and we'll get into that, is oftentimes your youth is, is at dinnertime, after-school time. And then the adult leagues might be from 8:00 PM to, you know, midnight, depending on what's going on. And so it really, it'd be, it'll depend on what's being rented and what are the programming.
Thank you.
That's kind of the main, main points of the, the rates. Any questions or thoughts? All right, with those, we're actually going to invite up the Friends of the Field House to chat about what they have planned.
I think we all get hats tonight, maybe. Hello, I'm Jocelyn O'Connor and I'm here to represent a newly formed organization called the Friends of the Soldatna Field House. And we have about half of our crew here this evening. We've got, let's see, Shannon Davis is here this evening. We've got Tim Dillon, Kathy Gensel and Steve Manley. Lisa Parker kind of helped organize this group and this is about half of us right now. This is a group of go-getters. I attended the first meeting. I skipped the second meeting because I was out of town. But by the third meeting, we had a bank account and a logo. So this is how much they're, they're engaged. The purpose of this, as you talk about fees, is really to make sure that the community has access to this. So that if someone shows up and they don't have that $2 or $3, we confront them, right? We've got seed money available and we've got fundraising efforts kind of in the works already so that this can be immediately used and everyone has access. So that's our first goal. And then second is to partner with Parks and Rec. Where, where else can we, we help? Whether it's grant writing or other partnerships with the, the Parks and Rec department beyond the Field House. So we're really excited, we're just forming lots of good things planned. And again, we've got a logo, so we're, we're here. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I'd offer a comment. This provides an opportunity for not only people in the community, but businesses, because it's modeled after Friends of the Library, an opportunity for people to make a donation and it can be tax deductible. And then it helps, it'll help the Parks Department because there's opportunities where the nonprofit can apply for grants that the city doesn't have the opportunity to. And working with, as Jocelyn said, working with the Parks Department, they'll identify and the group will identify, oh, we've raised X dollars. We want this to go to the flag football folks or we want this to go to seniors that maybe can't afford to buy a monthly pass. So it'll be, it'll be a great opportunity. And as Friends of the Library has grown, we will see Friends of Soldatna Field House grow as well.
That's right, we're really excited. I mean, I think this facility, I think Joel, you said at some point, you know, you open at a certain capacity, right? So we want to make sure that anyone that shows up, boom, let's, let's get the capacity up, right? So we're here, reach out to any of us. There's another, you know, group with us. We've, we've got half of us here, but we're all here. You're going to see us at the sports show and the home show in the very near future. We're looking forward to partnering at the grand opening in August and very excited, so thank you.
Brought up a question for Joel.
Yep.
What's going to be the capacity?
Fire code capacity or, yeah.
Well, let's go fire code.
Yeah. I think we're at, hmm, 11, 1400?
I, I don't remember. It of course depends on the configuration, whether it's just general admission with the people standing on the floor or if it's tables set up, there's a couple of different numbers. And I, I'm embarrassed to say I don't remember what the numbers are.
It was designed for the biggest events we can think of. And that would probably be home show, Sports and Rec show, wrestling tournament might be pushing that, that higher number.
Okay, and the other thing I noticed under event or rental, it looks like that's almost like a sit-down dinner picture there. Is that something that can be done there in the facility?
Correct, yeah. The facility is designed to host banquets and fundraisers. And so we, we did a lot of intentional design work to make it not feel like an ice arena or a gymnasium. So all of the basketball, volleyball stanchions, the hoops, all can be moved and disappear. There won't be banners and championship things up on the walls. So you could go in there and have a nice auction event. And some of the usual suspects will move over there, like probably the pie, pie auction, the soup supper, Safari Club's event, some of these bigger events that don't fit in the conference rooms. And they're, we're no longer going to let them use the ice rink side anymore because we don't want to put the floor down all the time. And so we're going to move those into the Field House.
And portable stages, do we have one that's large enough for that facility so it doesn't?
Correct, yep. A lot of our event stuff will be able to, we can move back and forth. We have a lot of pipe and drape and AV equipment, but we will be adding a few extra pieces just, just specifically for that, that size.
Vice President?
Yeah, one of, one of the things that has been talked about for many years is providing a space where we could have small conferences that we could host here on the peninsula. And I know many years ago, there was a list put together and there were over 100 associations in Alaska with 100 to 150 members that... that could look at coming and having events here. But we didn't have the space. And this provides us potentially with that opportunity going forward to also be a place for those small to medium-sized conferences to come here to the peninsula.
Tagging on to that, we actually have a letter and flyer completed, ready to go out. It's been completed for a while, but we wanted to make sure, well, what we were doing first. So as soon as we have everything wrapped up with, you know, the booking and fees and so on and so forth, then we can start sending out that information.
Jocelyn?
Thank you, all great information tonight. Looking at costs for the facility, I appreciate the, the breakdown of just total costs to get it established. One thing I was kind of hoping to gain through this work session that I hadn't seen brought up before is operational costs moving forward, so utilities, staffing costs. Do we have numbers of what the monthly or annual cost of operating this is going to be yet, or even just estimates?
Yeah, we have, we have a planned budget. Obviously, it's budget season for us. And so we are anticipating probably around, around $150,000 for the supply side of things. So this is, you know, travel and training materials, uniforms, kind of all that usual stuff that you see in our budget. And then staffing-wise, we are at, you got that one off the top of your head? I got it written down. We are looking at probably around 450 for staffing. So that's a total of 612. Does that sound right?
I can go, if you want some numbers, I can go grab what we have put together for the preliminary budget. I didn't bring it with me.
I can chat with you between the work session, the council meeting. I just, I would really like to know what this thing costs to continue to support after we have it.
Right, right.
Yes, I can kind of peek at my notes too. I think I, I might have an answer for you in a minute.
Thank you.
Let's go into booking policy. So this is typical to have a booking policy for a facility like this. We have one for the ice rink, we have one for the parks. It's basically a hierarchy of who gets to lock in dates first. Our stuff is first, this is our programming, whether it's our events, activities, similar to like Learn to Skate or Public Skate. And then it, it moves down into large events, reoccurring. These are a lot of times economic development drivers. So home show, sports show types, those types of things. And then youth, nonprofit stuff, and then into the commercial world. With all of this being said, we want to, we want to make sure that there still continues to be access for, for people like us to walk in, even though we, we might not be in a, an official pickleball league. We still want to use the facility, so there will be times sort of sectioned off that are just drop-in times, in the evenings, during the day, on, on weekends, where we might be able to get in there and play basketball or volleyball or whatever the drop-in sport is. And we, we are, McHalen's going to kind of talk through a little bit how we do it at the ice rink and how it looks over at the Field House.
So we really modeled this off of what we do over at the ice arena. That is a spectator facility first and the Field House will not be a spectator facility first. So over at the ice arena, we give priority to spectator events such as Brown Bears Hockey Games, Sohigh Hockey Games, concerts and, you know, sort of these larger economic boosts. And then we work our way down. We go into youth practices. So once we get all of our large things on the calendar, we put it out to Sohigh Hockey and we get all of their practices on the calendar. Then we go even farther down to our youth nonprofit hockey organizations. There used to be two of them. And they would kind of fight it out for hours, not really fight it out, but we would kind of sit down with them all at a table, divvy out the hours that we had available and try to come to an agreement of what worked best for every organization and served the most kids, hockey kids. And then kind of in the midst of all of that, we would still reserve some of that primetime ice, that after-work hours, time after-school hours, when everybody's ready to go play. We reserve that for our own programming, like Joel said, Learn to Skate classes. We've got a Saturday, 12:15, that we've had for years. It's our biggest Learn to Skate class because it's the most readily available for most families. As well as Saturday and Sunday, 1:00 to 3:00, public skate. It's easy to get somewhere at 1:00 on a Saturday for most people. So we want to make sure that we block off some of those perfect times for the public to come in and use it and we're not sold out 24/7 to private rentals.
So we see, we see a very similar model over at the Field House. Any thoughts, questions?
What's FCFS?
First come, first served.
Okay.
I had to ask the same thing.
Sorry, we use it in the campground, so I thought we could put it here.
I, I thought it was some big organization.
Last.
Yeah, yeah. Again, this is, you know, like everything we're talking about tonight, this is a work in progress. There's been a, a lot of research, there's a lot of good examples. But as, as you know, we adjust, we adjust our booking policy at the rink and at the park as needed. And we'll, we imagine we'll do something similar here.
So how far in advance can I book and for how long can I book activities for?
Yeah, that's something that'll follow soon in our policies and procedures section of the court rental document. We're hoping to have a, a facility coordinator on board to help us develop that. But based on other communities, it sort of starts at that 12-month mark when people are starting to book their conferences. Some conferences book two years in advance. But, you know, kind of that 12-month, we'll put it out to the large events, the top of the priority. We'll try to get our, our events and programs organized at that point too. And then sort of in that six, three-month time, three to six-month time is when we'd open it up to youth sports. A lot of them run on a season. And we're a small community, so our, our basketball coach might also coach soccer. And so he or she doesn't want to think about his soccer program in the middle of basketball season. So it'll, it'll kind of trickle down. We hope that monthly, we'll be able to open it up to just, you would be regular community members to book a court to go play with your family.
How soon are you planning on opening up for booking?
As soon as the policy is approved.
And if I want to book the whole facility, do I have to put a deposit down?
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably mimic what we historically have done in other, other facilities, the ice rink or the parks. And for big, large events, we'll do, we typically have like a 30% or 50% down to lock in dates. And we'll, we'll mimic that same process. We didn't, we didn't bring that with us today because it's really just a lot of procedures that we have ideas and plans. But we need to sort of get a priority list going first and then we can kind of work out the details.
Is there also a penalty clause in there in case somebody cancels all?
Oh yeah, big one, yep.
And, and a damage clause.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But yeah, I mean, we've, I've been in contact with somebody that runs very huge competitive basketball tournaments all over the state. His eyes got really big when he looked at our facility and was like, wow, we could bring a lot of tournaments to Soldatna instead of Anchorage in the valley or Fairbanks. And that's, you know, 40, 60 youth teams with all of their parents. And he's ready to, he's ready to lock in dates right now. I told him to wait for a second, but he's, he's ready.
I know we've had a discussion in the past about having wrestling matches in there. But are we able to handle those, the wrestling mats? Or do we have those or are they going to have to come from someplace else?
Typically, the wrestler community shares all those mats. And so we just collect, or they would collect them from all the different schools and, and users and, and bring them in when they do their big tournaments. So we don't have to own any of them. There, and we've already looked at how we can bring in bleachers upstairs if we did a wrestling tournament and kind of meet their needs. And, and that's one that often we'll plan two or three years out to get those, those dates locked in.
And would those mats be put down on the wooden floor or would it go down on the concrete?
Yeah, if I can speak, I was excited to learn they actually can go on turf and regularly go on turf, which is great because April is when their big tournament is. So it would fall kind of at the end of our turf season, which is a, a win for both sides.
Ms. Nelson?
And I'm just curious, I don't know if you, if you've thought about this as a specific target. I, I really appreciate the, being able to have some, what I'll just call individual access to things. Do you have a particular goal, a percentage, a number of hours a week? Is there anything like that or is it just going to be kind of something where we fill that in around the schedule and and kind of see where that goes? I'm just curious kind of how formal that, that intent or that goal is.
I don't think there's like a direct number, but if we use the example of the ice rink, every Tuesday evening is, is accessible for public skate. Every Saturday and Sunday at 1:00 is, is just for public skate. That's been that way for 40 years. Those, those times are locked in. We very rarely will move those, even if it's a big tournament, because we value just letting people use the facility with, and they don't have to worry about being on a team or, or an organized. So I can, I can see something very similar where we take a few chunks of time and we're like, nope, for 100 years, this is going to be, you know, open, open gym for soccer or something like that.
Thank you.
All right, last one is personnel changes. So there's quite a bit of it, there's a lot going on over in the Field House. And so we have kind of rearranged or are proposing to rearrange some of our, our staffing. This is also in your packet for tonight, but we'll just kind of jump through it really quick and, and ask any questions. The administrative assistant position has always been part-time. Last month, you guys adopted to move that to full-time, so thank you. That will be a huge asset to adding a huge facility. Field House Coordinator is a brand-new position, but is very similar to our current Activities Coordinator who manages the ice rink. This is somebody that's going to run the day-to-day operation, scheduling of all the different user groups and managing, or not managing, but scheduling the staff that's going to be in the Field House to make sure we always have somebody at the front desk. A very busy position that's, it's a lot of communication with a lot of different user groups trying to, you know, make all the pieces fit together and make sure everybody's got enough of what they need to be successful. The Maintenance Tech 1 and 2 positions, we've always had a maintenance position and a laborer. These are our, our, our go-getters that, you know, get out and do everything for us. We've, we've changed the name from Laborer to Maintenance Tech 1, mostly because they do way more than just what you would think a laborer does. They don't just sweep or mop or move a shovel. They are operating all of our equipment. And, you know, they're driving the ZAM, they're babysitting that ice arena by themselves in the evening or on the weekends. We ask a lot of them. Over time, the, the, the pool of applicants has, has gotten stronger. And so we were slowly asking more and getting more out of that position. And so we, we felt like changing the name was, was appropriate to kind of represent exactly what they're doing. And with that, it would also come with a small increase in pay that we're proposing to kind of match those duties, especially statewide, so we can be competitive. The Maintenance Tech 2 used to be maintenance, we just wanted to kind of formalize that. We are proposing one additional Maintenance Tech 2 position with the, with the opening of the Field House. They won't just live in the Field House, they'll be part of the bigger team. Everybody will shuffle in and out, but we're going to need some extra help to make that building, you know, survive for 100 years. So that's, that's being proposed tonight. The Rec Specialist and the Rec Aid are the other two areas that we're kind of shifting around. We'll start with the Specialist. This used to be a Learn to Skate instructor. This is somebody that has maybe additional skills or additional trainings or certifications that can teach a very specific activity. A lot of times you'll see this with fitness things like yoga. They'll have special training to be able to do that. Right now, we only have the Learn to Skate instructor. So they're not able to go over to the Field House because we don't have ice skating over there. So we're changing the name to Rec Specialist, gives us some more flexibility. The Learn to Skate instructor will still live underneath that title, but then maybe they are also yoga instructors and they would want to go over to the Field House and teach a specific class over there. These are, these are still 10 to 15-hour-a-week positions, so it's not a full-time job. And then we are proposing a small increase from the pay ranges in that position. And requesting one FTE of, of that level. That'll probably be five or six, seven people, not just one human because of the hours. And then the Rec Aid is similar. We used to have a skate guard and an office position, very entry-level. A lot of customer service, it's kind of, you know, standing at the window, you know, checking people in, you know, making sure everybody's paid or handing out a basketball. We needed to be, to be able to use that human on both sides. We, we changed the name so they have, we have some more flexibility in where that person can work. And we're, we're requesting 1.5 FTE of that, that range. Juno's a good example. About four years ago, Juno, Parks and Rec inherited a Field House, very similar to ours, a little bit smaller, only turf, but still had a walking track. They inherited it from a nonprofit group that had been running it for a long time. They thought that they could run it with two and a half FTE and quickly found out that that was not sufficient. And they've since moved to three and a half or four FTE with that coordinator position and the Rec Aid positions. So our model is, is not just make-believe. We're really looking at their facility because it's a, it's a pretty good translation to what we expect. We probably will do more programming than they do right now, but that's just because of the nature of their facility and ours. Any questions?
Any questions from anyone on the council? Mr. Nelson?
Just to clarify, the Field House Coordinator obviously sounds like it's dedicated to the Field House. Are all the rest of those positions shared amongst all your programs?
Correct.
For a facility that you're proposing this amount of hours for, it seems, I'll just comment, it seems very reasonable to me. So I appreciate the, the good thought that went into that.
Thanks. This is just a visual of, of how we feel like our department is changing with this Field House. And last year, we, we moved or we brought the Operations Supervisor position back. Trevor Baldwin moved into that. He's been with us for 20 years, I think. So the operations side of things, it will not, it's not two silos, but they are, we're kind of shifting a little bit of energy. So the Operations Supervisor will kind of manage the day-to-day operation of the maintenance crew, whereas the Assistant Director will kind of focus a little bit more on the recreation side and making sure that the, both the ice rink and the Field House are being run well. Some bigger Parks and Rec departments, those two divisions are in separate buildings and they never talk to each other. That's not our case. We're just, we're getting so big that we needed to, to kind of spread the, the organization up a little bit. So that's just a visual of how we think things will work out. That's, that's kind of the spiel. Most exciting part, August 16th, we've been waiting 23 years for this. Twenty, yeah, 23 years ago, we did a feasibility study to see if a Field House could work that was attached to the Sports Center. That was in, actually probably 25 years, actually, I think, so to finally be that far.
I, I found the history based on a meeting we had in, I have stuff from 2018, a work session and 22 work session. And previous efforts go back to 2000 when Raven Contractors did an initial conceptual plan. And then it came back in 2019, 2015, we appropriated money for design. And then we had the special election in 2019. And then we had another special election. So anyway, yeah, 25, 25 years. And so it's, and I know when the ice arena was constructed, people initially thought it was constructed and it was going to make money and it, and it cost the city money. But it's paid back for the city. And this facility is going to cost us money to operate initially. But, you know, that's, we knew that going into it when we did the bond package and moved forward. And we did this for the community. And I hope everybody comes out on August 16th.
It's truly a quality of life issue for the It's truly a quality of life issue for the entire community, not just the city of Saldana and its residents, but our entire community, which is quite large. And I've been around for a number of years while this has been working. And I'm very proud of what we've done and what's going to happen. And I commented, I think, last week or last meeting about how Dr. Anderson was very influential and very much in support of this. And it's, you know, August 16th is a day I'm waiting for. It's going to be a great day for the entire community, and I hope to see a lot of people there. And how time flies when we're having so much fun. 25 years, I'm thinking, gosh, that's right. I've been around here for a while. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Gensel?
Fantastic presentation. I appreciate everyone coming today and putting all this before us. I wanted to circle back to some discussion that was made earlier in the presentation about a focus on being inclusive for teenagers in the community, not just those that are participating in organized sports, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity out there, and I fully support continuing to support those types of activities. But I want to focus more on the fact that, you know, we had a teen center here in Saldana that we lost some years ago. And we're looking at degradation of activities that are available through the school system right now with that funding going away. And I'm just very appreciative that we're going to be able to come into the community and present more opportunity for teenagers here in Saldana that don't, that otherwise have opportunity to get out and do something that might not necessarily be tied to sports. So it's very important. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Anything else from the administration?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you to the team for putting this together and presenting it to you. I did look back at some preliminary budget, but we'll get you budget numbers, maybe even by the next meeting at 6 o'clock. We'll get that budget numbers for you. One thing that we talked about with this department specifically, you know, when Joel brought me like the proposed staffing levels, there is a lot of discussion about that. And, yeah, and perhaps grilling of information. But anyway, a lot of discussion about that. And you said it, and I think absolutely, we talked about the quality, quality of life, what this brings to our community, and also what is needed to run that facility and to run it well, both facilities, and to run them well. I truly believe that the Parks and Rec Department is the most public-facing department, perhaps police, but in a whole different realm. But anyway, Parks and Rec is the most public-facing. And we do, you know, what we need to do to run the facilities, because now we have multiple facilities. And so I thank you for your support and for really just supporting us along the way, throughout all of the processes that the city has been through.
And I'd like to take a second to thank the staff, everyone that's worked on this project for as many years as it has been. They've done a terrific job. We had some bumps in the road here and there, but it's all worked out. And we're proud of what you guys have done and what the administration has done to make this a facility. I think between our Parks and Rec and our library, we have the number one in both. You look at the library, and nowadays, people do everything on a computer. But you look at the traffic we have going into the library every day. And then you look at the traffic we have going into the Parks and Rec, the field, not the Field House, but the ice hockey rink. I can remember when my son was playing hockey, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, we were there. 12 o'clock at night, we were still there. And then you took a look, take a look at Saldana Creek Park, and it's almost gotten to the point of overuse, but it's, it's a facility that everybody in this community knows about and loves. So again, thank you for all your hard work. And I don't think we have anything else before this work session, so we'll-